The Essential Parish Planning Commission will come to order. Let the record show that all members are present except Chairman Donald Sanjay, who's away on a family member. We all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Point your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Staff introduce themselves, please.
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
Ricky Compton, Planning and Development Director.
Michael Petty, Planner.
Lance Brock, Zoning Official.
Ray Miller, Engineering Department.
Tim Ward, Engineering.
Is that everybody? I have no comments. Is there any member of the public that has signed up for the public comment period? In that case, we'll move to the first agenda item, the public hearing to approve or deny the following family partitions. First one is Janet. Oh, let me back up. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nizo, calendar. Minutes are approved. All right. The first, the Janet Mueschel part.
James, I'll be representing Earls and Associates and Dwight Sears on the following family partition. Comments were made, addressed, and corrected on the plat, asking the commission for approval.
All comments are addressed. Staff recommends approval.
Is there any public comment? Have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second for approval on this. All in favor? Those opposed? Any Virginia Brennack estate?
Darrell Williams with Alvin Fairburn and Associates, representing Mr. Tolplay. Darrell Williams with Alvin Fairburn, representing Mr. Tolplay for the family partition. We ask that you guys approve it for us.
Do the public, do the officials have any comment?
Okay, on this one, there were several comments made at the initial review. The applicant submitted a revised map indicating that all comments have been addressed. After the second review, it was noted that a number of the comments actually were not addressed as originally made. So I provided on the review comments in the packet, comments that are still outstanding. And I'll just read the ones that are outstanding. Per Section 17-4038 of the Land Development Code, a 12-foot utility servitude is required for all proposed lots. And I ask that the drawing be revised to add this servitude. The servitude was added along the proposed track, E3A1, along one side, but the servitude is required to be along a 12-foot of the entirety of E3A3, as well as the E3A2, proposed E3A2, needs a 12-foot utility servitude shown around the required T-turnaround that has also not been added to the drawing. That's a part of Comment 8. From that point, the drawing needs to be revised to show the existing driveway for the existing residence of proposed lot E3A3. And then, the comment per Parish Land Development Code, a T-turnaround is required for the private servitude of passage. The drawing needs to be revised, revise the turnaround, and adjust the utility servitude and setbacks accordingly. Also, the parish records show as far as FEMA designation, that the property falls within the floodplain designation AE, not X-shaded. The map needs to be revised to reflect the current floodplain designation. In addition to that, the correct base flood elevation for the property needs to be verified since the flood zone was not correct. And then, from engineering, the lot acreage calculations are wrong. The total acreage of each of the three proposed lots were off by fractions of acres, and so the actual acreage is reflected in the note there. So staff recommends approval based on satisfaction of comments number 1, 2, 5, and 8 through 11 being addressed, or actually 8 through 12 being addressed, adding the engineering note.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the applicant, is there any reason why the 12-foot utility servitude requirement couldn't be met, or the T-turnaround requirement? Those two seem to be the only two physical issues on that. Was that listed on the original, on the original comments by you guys?
Yeah, I took these comments from the original comments that were made in the email back on the original. The only additional comment that's in addition to what I made originally from the review is the engineering note of the acreage calculations. And so, those were given to me after the engineering department had had a chance to review. I also want to add, because I overlooked it, that the drawing needs to be revised to provide instrument numbers for the reference maps listed on the plat, as well as the drawing needs to be revised to change the label of the proposed parcels to lots rather than tracks.
The T-turnaround, the servitudes apparently was an oversight, but we have no problem making these revisions to the plat. Well, in that case, I would recommend that we, recommend this for approval to the council.
A second? Or another comment?
Yes, a comment. You're going to recommend approval based on one that you've been...
Assuming that the comments are addressed.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Motion, a second. All in favor? Those opposed? All right, let's see. We have public hearing to approve or deny the following subdivision for final plat, Woodgate Townhomes, Phase 1 and 2.
Robbie Overall, GWS Engineering, representing Woodgate Townhomes. I believe I've submitted the final plat for review. I believe I've addressed all of their comments and request approval of these additional five lots.
Staff, what do you say?
Okay, on this one, we had a similar situation. We issued comments, received a revised map, as well as a letter and a couple of exhibits back from the applicant, addressing their stance on the comments. I've gone through and I've covered all the comments that were initially made. There were a total of 12 comments. The ones that have been addressed, you'll see in italics, have been addressed. So I'll cover the ones that we feel are still outstanding. Comment number four, proposed lot 23 has its rear northwestern corner encroaching into the existing drainage ditch. Townhome lot shall not encroach upon existing ditches, et cetera. Please revise lot layout to remove encroachment and adjust setbacks and servitudes accordingly. Comment number five, per the Parish Development Code 17-4022, each townhome lot shall have 400 square feet of private outdoor space. This space cannot be encumbered by servitudes, right-ofways, et cetera. Please confirm that lots 22 and 23 meet the required 400-square-foot requirement after addressing comment below. And so, if you'll refer to your packet, the applicant submitted a drawing that illustrates how Lot 23 is accommodating the 400-square-foot private outdoor space. You'll see that there is a portion of the rear of Lot 23 that has the outdoor space, as well as they use the actual side lot of the structure as part of that calculation. You'll notice I highlighted the portion along the side of the building, and that square footage is approximately 383 square feet. And so, when you take that out of the 690 square feet, you're left over with a 370.2, or 307.2 square foot leftover space in the rear of the lot. And so, my comment on that was, you know, at face value, the lot has 690 square feet of private outdoor space, but staff feels like, you know, considering you're taking out, you know, 382, or 383 square feet of space along the side of the building, which, you know, is only five feet of width, that, you know, it's not really meeting the true intent of having 400 square feet of private outdoor space. And if you, you'll continue on with the comments. The access to the existing track TP, which is the treatment plant track, there's also a sketch that the applicant provided that shows how the treatment plant is being accessed. It's through a 15-foot shared drainage servitude, as well as access servitude to that treatment plant, which runs through the rear of Lot 23, which, when you take into consideration the true rear of the townhome, is going to be encumbered by, you know, 15-foot of drainage servitude, as well as, you know, access to the treatment plant that exists just a few feet behind that lot. We felt like, you know, like I said, at face value, it may meet the required 400 square feet, but, you know, in actuality, it's falling somewhat deficient upon that. And then, the comment number 10, revised drawing to include top bank width of the existing drainage ditch. The applicant's shown the drainage ditch to be the 30-foot design width, which comes from the drainage construction plans that were submitted as a part of the preliminary plat of the development. However, through discussions with our drainage director, as well as aerial imagery, the ditch today is actually greater than that through, you know, probably erosion, you know, taking place. And so, you know, by definition, it requires a greater servitude. The applicant actually met with the drainage director, and so they worked out where that's not the case. I'm just pointing out that the code still requires it, and I'm kind of leaving it that. And so, based on the conditions of Lot 23 encroaching upon the ditch, the square footage requirement of the private outdoor space, we are recommending denial based on comments number four and five.
Okay, let me, I may address these as best I can. I did try to, I did meet with the parish, and the ditch as it exists, the servitude in the ditch were actually built by my client. Prior to this project, it was a marginal ditch, if anything, a big swale ditch. And it was built for this project, and the servitude 15 feet off each top bank was created in conjunction with this project. And in fact, I believe you were supplied copies of the approved preliminary plat. I don't know if that was in your handout. I have one here. This is all essentially already been approved on a preliminary plat level. The lot layout, the build, the exact building footprint, the joined access to get to track TP actually already exists on the existing final plat. That's nothing new. That's an existing condition. So, and then, you know, if we're going to argue the intent of the rule, I mean, it's, we're satisfying the rule with the free space. And in fact, I don't even believe in my sketch, there's additional free space on the front of the townhome that I'm not sure I even included, but it's there. So, you know, it's, the space is there. It's legally there. It satisfies the rule. If we're going to start getting into the intent of the rule, then maybe, maybe there could be some clarification later on. And, again, the fact that the lot itself encroaches into the servitude was, you know, that's just, that's the way the project was designed and approved several years ago. We're merely, we're merely beginning to finish an existing project. So, we're not asking for anything new, simply to permission to proceed with what's already been approved.
I'd like to hear the staffs. Okay, the encroachment into the servitude, we don't necessarily have a problem with, with the proposed lot 23. You know, like, like the applicant stated, that was, you know, given as servitude, and, you know, the shared drainage access servitude was, was a part of the preliminary, and then the final plat of Phase 1. What, what we feel like is an issue is that the lot actually encroaches within, or past the top bank of the ditch. And so, you know, that, that becomes the problem. It's not that, you know, the servitude runs through the rear of the property, but, you know, if you were to, you know, revise the lot layout of that lot to stop it at the top bank of the ditch, what ultimately would happen is you would have to offset that line for your, your, your building line, your rear building line. And at that point, when you do that, you're literally cutting off the corner of that building. And so, that's where we felt like was a problem, because the lot can't extend within the ditch. And so, as far as the comment on the private open space, the code reads that there shall be a 25-foot yard alongside and rear of each townhome site, and that is the overall site, not the each building site. And then, it reads, each townhome shall have its own lot, yard space, or enclosed courtyard area. So, one space, not multiple spaces that add up to. Of at least 400 square feet, reasonably secluded from view of streets or from neighboring property, such yard shall not be for all-street parking or for any accessory building. And so, we feel like, like I mentioned earlier, that the five-foot wide side yard does not really meet the intent of what is described within the code for what would be considered a private lot yard space.
Again, I, I don't even know, I don't even feel that this should be a discussion, because it's essentially already been approved on the preliminary plat level. And I mean, if I can even ask if this can, is this even, I mean, is, would this be an issue? I mean, again, it's, it's already been approved. You know, I don't, I don't want to do this on, like, speak on behalf of my owner in this instance, but Lot 23, if you look to the left of it, there's that triangular piece. I can move the line and get, you know, get plenty of square footage to get some green space for that one particular lot. It would be contiguous, it'd be one piece, but I just, again, I don't feel like I need to do that. And, again, the preliminary plat was approved with the top bank of the ditch shown. It was constructed per the plans that were approved by the parish. The project has been, that facet of the project has been accepted many years ago by the, by the, by the parish. If the top bank of the ditch is out of shape, which I have no doubt, over the few years, it probably could use a little dressing up. But, the lot was approved this way initially by the parish. I'm just merely asking for the final plat to be approved. And, you know, I, I can see if I can tweak this lot to get that corner clip out of the physical ditch. I don't feel like I should have to, but, I mean, we're talking literally like two by three feet. Can I ask, did it be approved as is? Is that, is that acceptable? I mean, but if, if you're going to deny it, I don't want to, but I just feel like it should be accepted. I've met with the parish. I just, I feel like this is an acceptable request.
Mr. Chairman, I would not want to deny this based on the technicality regarding the square footage issue. The only concern now seems to be the encroachment on the ditch right-ofway. So can that be resolved or not? It is something that this, this commission can't address now.
Well, I don't feel that the, I don't feel that the issue is the encroachment onto the ditch right-ofway. I feel the, the sticking point at this point is the, the encroachment of the lot itself over the, the top bank of the physical ditch.
We have a comment.
I believe so.
You can if he calls you.
Yes.
Billy Aguilar, I mean, we have approved probably 50 or 60 subdivisions in the last 10 years, and probably every one of them has a rear ditch servitude with a rear ditch on the rear of all these lots. Now, who said you can't have a, a lot encroaching to a servitude? Because every lot on every approved subdivision we have has a ditch on the rear side of it, and the ditch is inside of the lot line.
Other than the square footage issue, what else does the staff object to? Other than the square footage issue we discussed, what else does the staff object to with regarding to the...
I just think that, that quite simply, it's the encroachment of the lot line into the top of the bank of the ditch. On the preliminary plat, when we reviewed it, it almost looked like it was just a, two lines that were contiguous. They sort of overlapped. At the corner of the lot line was the top of the bank of the ditch. At this plan, when we were reviewing it, there is literally area of that lot that is in the downslope, potentially underwater part of that ditch. And so, we felt like the lot line shouldn't be part of that ditch. It should be separate. The whole drainage servitude and sewer treatment plant, we recognize those are ills of the past that we cannot resolve. We wanted you guys to be aware that they were noted, and in case you had questions, we had addressed them, with the lot overlapping into there. Now, the intent of the townhome subdivision code, as I interpret it, was to create a private space for each of those owners, to be a fenced-in private space so they can put a barbecue pit, so they can, and 400 square feet was established in the code. And if they're offering to redraw that lot line to create 400 contiguous square feet that can be fenced in, then I recommend that we do that, because that's the intent of the code. Townhouse lots don't have a lot of private space. I would venture a guess that on the preliminary plat, we didn't have actual building square footages. We probably had a shaded-in line that reflected what a setback envelope was. And so, whether or not Mr. Becknell back then was able to calculate the 400 square feet, I can't answer that question. That was before my time.
If he were to change the lot line in the rear of the property to, is there, then is there a setback issue with the building?
He could request a variance for that setback issue, but yes, there will be a setback issue, but that is something he can go to the Board of Adjustments and get the variance, because he's, there's a hardship of the ditch.
Mr. Ori.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I guess I just feel like there's going to be a physical property line that's going to be in the, you know, within the top bank of the ditch, but on the other hand, this is, this was approved as a preliminary plat, so the developer was, I guess, under the impression that they can move forward with their design as it was previously approved. It's kind of hard to change that up on them and incur that additional time and cost, I guess, if, if...
The preliminary plat did not depict any significant portion of that lot inside the top bank of that ditch. The lines are almost contiguous. So, if that was the intent when the preliminary plat was submitted, that's not what we're looking at today. They don't match.
Has anything changed from that preliminary plat on this lot, or the building footprint?
No, absolutely not. Was the top of the bank surveyed for this survey?
No, the entire, the top of the bank of the ditch was not surveyed.
Can we put it back on the, can we put it back on the screen? Would that help if we can see what we're talking?
The top bank of the ditch was not surveyed in conjunction with the preparation of this revision. The top bank was designed, built, and accepted a few years ago. I mean, is it probably not in a tip-top shape? It, you know, is it freshly graded like it was a few years ago? Probably not. Could it be brought back to snuff with, you know, during the courts of building this, you know, just dress it up? Probably. I mean, it's not an enormous ditch. I just, I just, I can appreciate what the Planning Commission is trying to do. It's just, I, you're trying to almost, you know, you're trying to burden this existing project with new intentions and rules, and it's, I just don't feel it to be, that should be the case.
Mr. Catwell.
If the lot encroaches on the ditch, then at some point, there could be a structure built on that lot. Am I correct?
No, not on the ditch. Well, I mean, there will be a structure on the lot itself, but not on the ditch. No, no, that's impossible, but due to utility servitudes, access servitudes, and ditch servitudes. I mean, no, no structure can be built.
Well, and that is my concern, because the code 17-8051, no permanent structures permitted within servitudes. So now, how do we know at no point, there's going to be a structure there if we're going to allow a lot to encroach upon the ditch?
Lots encro, lots don't, lots don't encroach on the servitudes. Lots are burdened by servitudes. Every subdivision lot in this parish is, okay, 99.99% of them are burdened by a servitude. Okay? Whether it be a parish, you know, a 15-foot rear drainage servitude, a 12-foot utility servitude, every single lot in this, in this parish has a servitude on top of it, and they have the revocation, you know, there's just, that's what servitudes are there for, to keep that from happening. So, nothing can be built, or will be built there legally.
Would it be that much of a hardship for, to request a variance to ensure that the lot in itself is not within the servitude?
No, we can't take the lot out of the servitude, and I, and again, that's, I don't, that, no, I mean, we can't, we can't remove the lot from the servitude, and it's just not practical at this, at this juncture.
Mr. Ori.
I guess I'm, I guess I feel like we're not really doing the, you know, the public an injustice by, you know, if this were to get approved, that wouldn't be doing a person injustice if they were to purchase it. You just might have trouble selling it, because when you walk out the back door, you're walking into a ditch.
It's deceiving, there is space there. I mean, but yes, it's, I guess the burden would be on the seller.
You might have a hard time selling it, I guess, I don't know.
I mean, that's, you know, that's not, you know, that's not our concern essentially.
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the problems we have here is that this, this project was approved, like Mr. Ori is referring to, but it was approved based on, from what I'm hearing from staff, the initial plat that was presented, and this revised final plat that we're looking at is not the same thing. And it makes it kind of hard for, for me to make a decision based on hearing that it wasn't encroaching into the ditch with the initial plat.
It was. Nothing has changed.
Yeah, I'm understanding it to be the same.
Nothing has changed from the preliminary to this, to this juncture.
The preliminary plat shows the lot line of that lot corner going up and touching the top bank. The final plat that we received as a part of this submission shows that lot corner going beyond the existing top bank.
We have actually two different presentations.
So there are two separate situations. I don't know if it was an issue of just where the top bank was drawn during the preliminary plat, and it's, it's more, you know, approximately located on this final plat. I mean, I'm not questioning that the lot has changed necessarily, but graphically, what is shown on the plat is not the same as what was approved preliminarily with, with those lots.
Do you have, do you have a copy of the preliminary plat available?
Is that what you have under?
Yeah, I mean, this is what I have.
That's what got approved?
And it's clear to me.
Can we? Well, I guess maybe we can just pass it along, I mean, just to see. See, I feel like nothing's really changed with the preliminary to, to final plat, especially with that corner of that lot.
I tend to agree with Mr. Ori that...
I'm not seeing...
That it seems like it was approved.
Like, from the time the ditch draw was submitted to there. Seems like we'd be incurring a, almost a redesign from something they were under the impression that they can move forward on.
You know, whether it was approved or not, if it's, if it still doesn't meet the code, it doesn't meet the code. It could have been inadvertently approved, but I, I think, I still think it's a technicality. I think Josh is right, that it's going to be sort of let the buyer beware. You're not going to quite have the square footage that we intend, you know, that, that we intended there'd be, and I appreciate the staff's diligence in, in looking at this this way, but I'm not, I'm not ready to deny this on, on that basis, though.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm in agreement with the other two gentlemen. I have more of a philosophical question about, just because something was approved... I have more of a philosophical question about just because something was approved some time ago before any of us were around. His supposition is we can't change that and shouldn't. And I'm wondering why we wouldn't. If something's wrong, something's wrong, or if it was interpreted a different way, and it's...you know, this is a different day. So philosophically, how are we going to fix that?
That is probably an in-depth question that we need to sit down with legal and probably do a little case research just nationally to see what the policies are. I would make the same argument about drainage. The existing building has sandbags against the side of it. Why does it have sandbags? Probably because the drainage doesn't work. So is this building going to resolve any drainage issues? We're not here to answer that question. But I tell you, when we drove out there, there's sandbags next to a building that exist on that property today.
You know, there is a reason why we sit here and review the final plats.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you're right.
There could have been...it could have been approved earlier. And I want to review, but there's still, when the final plat is presented, something could be caught that was missed before. I just...so I think that this commission could deny this if we felt inclined to do it. I don't. I want to move, unless there's further discussion, I want to move for approval of this.
I have a motion. Do I have a second, Mr. Calendar?
I like the motion that we hold in the biz, our decision, and give staff opportunity to provide valid concerns as they're raising and not hastily move forward. So my motion would be that we hold in the biz until next session.
That's a substitute motion. I'll second it.
Which one? Which one you?
The second motion.
Staff, can we do that?
We have two motions now?
I'm sorry?
You're going to vote on the substitute motion first and then the original motion, so...
See, withdraws the original?
Yes.
No, we vote on the substitute motion. If it fails, then we vote on the original motion.
All right. Well, let's vote on the substitute motion. You want to repeat what the motion is?
May I ask what the substitute motion...like, what issues he would like... What issues would you like to see resolved by virtue of your substitute motion?
Well, obviously, the concern that we have in listening to staff, I believe, is the encroachment issue. Does it present a problem? The fact that it was approved at some other point, as colleagues have quoted, isn't a major issue for us. If it presents a problem, we need to understand what the problem is, what the potential for dangers are.
Is it the encroachment of the physical lot into the top bank of the ditch?
Into the ditch, that is one concern, yes. Not so much the spaces. While that issue was raised, I understand that. But that encroachment issue, again, the thought to me, as I quoted, you know, seventeen-eight zero five one servitude, no structures. So with that in mind, I'd like some clarity from staff and research before I can say, yes, I can approve as stated.
Mr. Ori.
I just don't feel like, I guess, tying this up another thirty days on us doing further research. I mean, I feel like we're kind of hammering things out pretty well. I don't know. I guess...
Well, I think we have to go ahead and vote on the substitute motion first. So those in favor of the substitute motion, say aye.
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 So...I think that was...
I'm opposed.
So three to two. Is that right? Two opposed? All right. So the motion passed.
Can it?
You need a roll call.
All right.
Can it pass with three?
It's not a call.
Majority is...
Just a simple majority, or does that have to be four?
And you need to keep in mind, too, that, you know, if you want to put this off and study it, it's automatically approved if you don't hear it within sixty days of their application, not just the first time it came up before you. So that's something to consider.
Is that sixty days?
I don't know when their application is.
Can I just say a few final things? I appreciate the request for...to investigate this further. I would hate to think that my client is the victim of, you know, a theological soul-searching on the part of this commission, because, you know, can we correct deeds of the past? I mean, I found a letter...I found a copy of the preliminary plat with a letter from two thousand nine stapled to it, and it looks like it's from the Planning Commission. You know, and it just clearly states, it clearly depicts the current situation. And I just don't feel like we're doing the public a disservice or harming the welfare of the public by allowing this to proceed. And we can look at it for...I mean, we're not talking a lot of area. We can, as a community, as a parish, address this on future issues.
Okay. So, but legal, did we...we voted, but that was not enough votes?
You don't have a majority of the Planning Commission voting in favor of it.
All right. So then that motion failed. Now we have the original motion. So, Mr. Chafisi, would you like...
Original motion is that we recommend approval to the council.
And I'll second that motion.
Can we have a motion and a second? Those in favor of that motion.
Can we have one last piece of discussion?
Yes, sir.
As I understand it, it doesn't matter how we vote, because it's going to be approved prior to the time we meet next, right?
If you don't approve or deny it tonight, or approve with conditions, whatever, if you don't have an affirmative action tonight in sixty days, from what I understand, will lapse. Before your next meeting, it would be automatically approved as presented, as applied.
Before your next regularly scheduled meeting?
Yes.
You can call a special meeting if you wanted to address just this one issue.
All right.
In that case, I'm going to side with approval as well now, since it's kind of a fait accompli.
All right. So let's have a roll call on Mr. Chafisi's motion. Mr. Chafisi?
Whoa, man. Can I ask one more? In the event that it does not pass, where am I?
We have to decide whether to approve or deny, or whether to recommend or not.
So is this like all or nothing kind of type thing? Can I come back?
It could be.
Can I...if it doesn't pass...
What I understand is if we do nothing, then you're going to be...it's going to come approved anyway.
Or you could approve with conditions.
My motion was to approve it as it is, send that approval to the council, or recommendation for approval to the council.
You guys are just approving this? There's no recommendation to the council?
Oh, okay. Then I'm recommending approval.
Mr. Burgess?
I recommend approval.
Mr. Nizo?
No.
Mr. Ori?
Recommend approval.
Mr. Callender?
Oppose.
So, do I break the tone? Then I am bar the motion. Okay. I just didn't know the chairman could vote, so...
Four?
But that's not four, right?
That is four.
It's a four, okay.
So then it's approved.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll follow.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I'd still like to have the theological discussion, as you noted, at some future date. I think it'd be important for us to figure out how do we approach things that today don't meet the standard that may have been approved before.
It's just that people have made financial expenditures, depending on an approval, believing that it's true. I don't know if we can go back one.
You can approve a subdivision of plat with conditions. So in other words, you could have voted tonight to approve based on staff's recommendations. So that is an option.
We'd be right back where we were. Yeah, I'd like to approve that.
Okay. We have a public hearing to recommend approval or denial of the parish council for the following servitude revocations: Mancheck Harbor subdivision.
My name is Donnie Bujoy, and I'm actually representing myself for the removal of a twenty-five-foot rear servitude on Lot one sixty-nine in Mancheck Harbor subdivision.
Staff recommendation?
So the applicant had the series of utility companies to submit letters of no objection for the removal of the servitude. And actually, his letter to us as far as the application was actually not to revoke the servitude, but it was to revoke twenty of the twenty-five feet. So I want to make sure that, you know, that's known, that it wasn't to remove the entire thing, it was to reduce it to five feet. However, engineering has studied this situation. This servitude was placed as a part of the final plat and preliminary plat approval for the subdivision on a lake that is privately maintained by the subdivision. The parish has no stake in maintaining this pond, nor will it ever have. And so it's engineering's point of view that since the detention pond is the responsibility of the subdivision authority, not the parish, the engineering is recommending the revocation of not only this lot, but all rear lot servitudes in the subdivision paralleling the pond edge. And so that's engineering's stance on the situation. I believe engineering is correct in their statement. However, tonight, we're talking about Lot one sixty-nine. We're not here on behalf of all of the lot owners. So I believe tonight, you know, we deal with the single lot rather than the greater portion of the subdivision.
Comment? Comment ahead from Mr. Lanza.
Yes, sir.
Based on the engineering recommendations, does it actually require an application from each individual for all the lots that parallel the lake?
No.
Okay, so we could revoke them all and save a whole lot of time, since they deemed it's not necessary.
Well, you're just making a recommendation here, but the servitude is in favor of the parish and parish council. So they could choose to give it up.
Right, but I mean, we could make a recommendation for all of them at one time.
I'd like to make that motion based on the engineering department, because after looking at the plat and reading their engineering recommendations, I see no real need to have...I mean, we've got thirty feet besides that before you get to the lakeside, and it's not serving the purpose.
So we're taking the servitude away from...people who don't know that we're taking the servitude away from...kind of feels...
There'll be posted notice of the negotiating council.
Okay.
When there's a service revocation, there goes an ordinance. So there'll be an introduction, be notified, noticed publicly, and also a separate meeting for adoption if the council chooses. So there is plenty of opportunity for them to speak and comment. I don't know. Are there...
A letter sent?
Comment?
This is a public hearing, so...
Billy Aguilar again, and I'm about...Mr. Bujoy, yeah, I respectfully disagree with revoking the servitude. I actually dug this lake, and the servitude was there for somebody to go clean this lake out from time to time. If you revoke the servitude around this lake, somebody in the future at some time has to go clean this lake out. How are they going to do it? Even if it's the subdivision homeowners association that has to clean it out, somebody's got to have access to that lake to clean it out. Every subdivision we've got now has a servitude around them for access to them, whether it's a privately maintained lake or whether it's a parish maintained lake. I think the servitude needs to be there for access to get to the lake. Period. I mean...
What about the...
If you're going to revoke the servitude for all these other people on the side, they may even want to clean that lake out. They may have the homeowners association to clean it out. Before you revoke all the servitudes, you need to ask all the other people that have lots on the lake if they want to do that or not.
Well, it looks like the HOA owns a thirty-foot common area in addition to it, though. So there's another thirty foot that the HOA already owns.
That's your house.
That's the property line.
That's the property line.
And that's thirty-one feet.
Yeah, but that's the slope of the bank. That, from the back property line, is the slope of the lake down to the water line. It'd go back in the same thing y'all discussed a little while ago. You know, the top of the property line goes to the top bank of the slope of the pond. And there's another servitude from the slope back into the lots to be able to maintain the slopes. So not only do you have to maintain the lake, but you have to maintain the slopes. But the servitude was placed there for a reason. You know, I mean, I respectfully disagree with trying to revoke servitudes. I mean, I got them on lakes that I do. If you revoke all these servitudes on lakes, then why do we put them in the first place? Because I want to take them out of my subdivision, too. I've got four subdivisions out there. I want them revoked on all mine. They're all privately maintained lakes. So if we do one, we're going to do them all. The servitude was there for a reason.
Can you tell us what the purpose for revoking the servitude on this particular lot is?
For the installation of a pool. My pool will go about ten foot to my property line, and the concrete decking will go additional five foot. So my original letter to the parish was to do twenty, to remove twenty of the twenty-five. So still giving five foot of servitude and then another thirty foot of area. I've also enclosed...I have aerial photographs of two of the other ponds in this subdivision that shows that eighty-five percent of the other lots, their property line is the water's edge. So if you ever have to go clean up, you will only have access to twenty-five foot of the servitude on that back property regardless. In mine, you're going to have thirty, even if you revoke the servitude.
I live on a lake also, and we...I submitted a design for bulkhead that was approved by the HOA. The lake's maintained by the HOA. And I maintain the lake behind my property. There's no way for anyone to pass through my property to maintain the lake. I appreciate what Mr. Aguilar is saying, but I think it's probably...and there are bulkheads all around our lake. And we do hire someone to maintain the lake. And they go through with a boat and spray if they need to or whatever. I'm not sure that maintenance of a lake absolutely requires that much space. Technically, my bulkhead's on the servitude that was for lake maintenance. So I don't think this is terribly unusual. I think we probably see that everywhere.
Have a motion?
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Callender.
Question. On your drawings, mark TRM one, in that lower-left corner of that piece portion there. Which one is it?
Standby. One sixty-nine. You missing one? Come here. Look, this is...you might be missing one. I have it.
Okay. Mancheck Harbor.
This is number ten eight.
Okay, you still want to make another...I'm waiting on you, Mr. Callender. You want to...
Okay. No comment.
All right. Anybody else have any comment? You have a motion of any comment?
I made a motion that we go ahead and go with the engineering department. And I'd like to make that a motion and revoke the servitude on all the lots that parallel the lake. I still believe that thirty foot gives them enough area to get there, even though it's sloped. I have a lake where I'm at, and it offers plenty of opportunities.
Okay, Mr. Nizo made a motion. Is there a second to Mr. Nizo's motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Can we have some discussion on that?
Oh, yes.
That's, you know, the fact that the engineering department recognized this issue is one thing, but this revocation servitude that's on our agenda is for one lot.
That's more than I'm leaning toward.
I think that the HOA could come back in Northwest on behalf of the residents that probably, maybe the one body of the HOA could request revocation of the servitude. I'm not sure that we should ask them that.
Are you going to make a substitute motion?
If you don't, I will.
Go ahead, Josh.
No, I would. I would like...I was kind of wondering that myself. I mean, I feel like this is...we're addressing this one lot. And I kind of want to stick with this rather than going with wipeout the entire servitude. And I'll make a substitute motion to...
Mr. Chairman, I would throw the motion.
Just this servitude on Lot one sixty-nine.
I'll second Josh's motion.
Okay. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Who did the second?
What?
Who did the second?
I did.
Mr. Chafisi. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Working through it.
The, it looks like Dane Marshon.
I'm Dane Marshon. I'll probably get these two servitudes removed because I'm going to sell some more land to my daughters, which is on that, one servitude is on Hellaup and the other servitude is on my property, in the middle of my property. And it don't need any drainage at all. There's no ditches on the place either.
Staff comment?
Uh, in this situation, the applicant, uh, prior to completing his application for servitude revocation through our office, uh, secured a, um, a line item on the agenda of the, uh, the East Ascension Drainage Board. Uh, a motion was made, uh, by one councilman and, and seconded and approved by another, uh, or seconded and then ultimately approved to revoke the servitude. Uh, after the fact, uh, the applicant completed his application so that we were able to fully process it, uh, we feel like there's no need to go against what, uh, the Drainage Board recommended, so we, we, uh, recommend, uh, to send this to council.
Motion. Mr. Ori?
I'll make a motion to approve this as a submitted revocation.
Mr. Burgess seconds. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number eleven, site plan review, light industrial development standards. Do we? So this is Holonola Foods?
Yes, sir, it's Holonola Foods Incorporated. Uh, this is located at, uh, sixty-eighty-eighth Industrial Drive, Lot Twenty-two. Uh, it's for a site plan review for the requirements of light industrial standards. Uh, it meets all the requirements and, uh, staff recommends approval of the site plan.
Just have one question. Uh, it states that it's going to use, uh, the existing community sewer plant. Is that going to, does it have the capacity for that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Have a motion? Mr. Burgess moves second.
I'll second.
Mr. Chafisi? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number twelve, the public hearing to recommend approval or denial to the parish council amendments to the Ascension Parish Unified Land Development Code. All right. Staff?
All right, so the first item tonight, uh, we first brought up in October of last year. It was then brought up for a public hearing in November and pulled and we were told that we would have a meeting in December and we were told we'd have a meeting in January and none of those meetings ever happened. So we wanted to bring it to you guys so that we could push it forward to the council and perhaps actually get something accomplished with this item. The intent is when someone comes before this body for an approval, or even comes to us and the chairman signs a plat at, uh, the staff level, we don't have a mechanism in place to ensure that the financial institutions who may have an interest in a piece of property are protected. This affidavit of mortgage declaration would be filled out anytime a property subdivision is going to take place. And what it does is that it requires the applicant to either A, vouch or swear before a, a person of a notary that they do not have a mortgage on the property, or B, secure approval from their bank that they are okay with the property subdivision that's going to occur. Because what we've seen in the last three to six months are multiple, uh, lots that were subdivided through either the simple division or family partition process that are being foreclosed on and property owners who may or may not have been a part of that original division, who acquired the lot and built a house or moved a house there are now being foreclosed on because the bank's mortgage was on the parent tract and they were not aware that it was being subdivided out and sold or given to other people. So our hope is to revise the development code, uh, code to add the language about the mortgage declaration page. It would be handed out when applications are made, um, they would fill the form out, it, it would be notarized, it wouldn't require any extra action on the part of the surveyors other than, you know, handing the form to the applicant and saying this needs to be filled out and notarized before the item, the plat will be signed or heard before the commission.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Burgess?
So that I understand, we're protecting the financial institution and we're protecting downstream, the eventual property owner before they purchase. They've got some additional protection to know that they're buying something unencumbered.
Yes, sir, and I, and I'm sure we're going to have a speaker that's going to attest to this, but it's come to our understanding that if a mortgage holder subdivides their property, they're immediately in default of their loan because they are no longer in ownership of what was originally mortgaged.
Sir.
Good evening. My name is Alvin LeBlanc. I'm with First American Bank and Trust in Vashery. Our bank actually has run into several problems exactly of the nature that the planning director's referring to. I can give you a couple of war stories for examples, but I, I think in some cases the, the old picture is, is worth a thousand of words. And if I may, I, I was kind of observing it the way I think your system works. Will this show up if I?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. This is a, a plat, uh, of two large tracts of land. Each of the, the properties that are surrounded by the yellow line there are about four acres each. So this tract of land was originally eight acres and our bank had a mortgage on that entire eight acres. Here's what happened to it. And the colors that you see in blue now are the, one of the lots was not affected and you can see that this lot still has four acres of buildable land on it. The other four acre lot you can see was hacked up by the, by the owner of that tract. He created a bunch of servitudes and he created a bunch of building setbacks. And essentially what he created was that, that little narrow blue line that appears on the second lot that I'm, I'm pointing to with the paperclip there. That's the only buildable area that was technically left. These, uh, the, the owner of the blue lot was one owner, the owner of this, this multicolored